All right, welcome to board meeting, November 20. I would first like to offer a moment of silence and remembrance for Tusky Valley School District. Recently, on the way to the Ohio School Board Conference, their bus was in an accident with their band and they lost three students and three chaperones. So if we could just take a moment of silence and remembrance of them. Thank you. And I also, before we begin, would just like to thank our Corin Township Police and Corin High School Building Administration and staff for their quick response to the squatting incident that happened last week and just thank them for putting our kids' safety and their lives on the line without knowing anything that might have actually been going on there. So, all right, please stand and join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Amy, would you take your call, please?
Mrs. Toby?
Here.
Mr. Gilbert?
Here.
Mr. Detzl?
Here.
Mr. Heather?
Here.
Mrs. Dees?
Mr. Tzort?
Here.
And we'd like to start by reading our mission statement. The Northwest Local School District will create a responsive learning community where all students are valued, challenged, and guided along a pathway to success. And we need to approve our agenda for this evening. I need a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
That passes five to zero.
Tonight, we're going to start with two presentations. Our first one will be our annual nutrition standards compliance report, so Lisa Robison will deliver that now.
Good evening, everyone. I'm back again this year. So we're going to talk tonight about the nutrition standards and student wellness administrative regulation. Due to recent concerns with poorer health and childhood obesity, we need to be particularly vigilant with the types of foods and beverages sold to students in our schools. School wellness plans and school meal programs must include and follow nutritional regulations as the put forth by the USDA. Together, parents, school staff, and students can create healthy school nutrition environment because we all know that better health equals better learners. Kids with healthier eating patterns and enough physical activity tend to have better grades. I actually recently read that there was a 17.5% increase in math scores when they have breakfast and/or lunch. They also remember what was taught in class, behave better in class, and miss less school time. This is why we need to create a healthy school environment. Our wellness policy does just that. It talks about nutrition education, physical activity, nutrition promotion, food and drinks sold to students, and food and beverage marketing. Specific rules within our wellness policy allow us only to market those foods and beverages that meet smart snack guidelines. Food provided for free, for example, food from class parties or as rewards, are actually exempt from those standards. However, we will always recommend that they make smart choices. Our nutrition standards in this district are in alignment with the Alliance for Healthier Generation School Beverage and Competitive Food Guidelines. Last year, the USDA established a new set of standards for milk, whole grains, and sodium for the schools. It now allows for flavored, low-fat milk, but it stipulates that at least 80% of all grains must be whole grain rich. It also reduces the sodium in the meals and snacks. So any food sold in schools must adhere to strict guidelines. Those are, it must be a whole grain rich product, or have the first ingredient as a fruit, vegetable, dairy product, or protein food. Be a combination food containing at least a quarter cup of fruit and/or vegetable. Or the food, and the food must meet the nutrient standards for calories, sodium, sugar, and fats. Aside from foods, we also have the beverage guidelines that we must follow. High schools are permitted to have water, flavored water, milk, 100% juice, mid-calorie beverages, those are like your G2s and PowerAids, and zero-calorie or low-calorie beverages. Elementary and middle schools are permitted to have only 100% juice or milk or water. Just to illustrate how much school meals have changed and how much they impact students on a day-to-day basis, Kids Healthy Eating Index score shows children receive their healthiest meals of the day at school. That's all I have. Does anybody have any questions?
What is the cost of a lunch at the high schools now?
At the high schools, it's $2.85, and at elementary, it's $2.60. And with that, they get an entree, which is typically a piece of pizza, burger, substantive item. They can also have two fruits, two vegetables, and a milk with that.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Lisa.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Chris Trentman, who is our liaison for Butler Tech, and he is going to introduce a presentation tonight from a few students.
So yes, thank you. Once again, my name is Chris Trentman, and by coincidence, we have our health tech program, right after the nutrition program. So I'd like to introduce Tara Mitchell and two of her students, and they like to come up and talk about a lot of the, some of the industry credentials they've been getting and all the great things that are happening in our health tech program, so.
Turn it over to them.
Hello, I'm Tara Mitchell. I'm the instructor at Butler Tech Colrain for the Healthcare Science Program. I've been with the program since February of last year, and I'm really excited about a lot of the things we've done. I'd like to thank you guys for allowing the students to present today. I brought with me two of my seniors that will present here shortly. I'm proud to say that we are currently, have half of our seniors credentialed as STNA, State Nursing Assistance. They just passed this weekend. That's really big, that's really up for our numbers, and they are getting ready to start phlebotomy, which I'll let them talk about. But Butler Tech provided us with these anatomized tablets. We couldn't afford the tables because they're like $150,000, but they were gracious to give us 12 of these tablets, and I'll bring them up, but you can move them along and it shows you the bones. It speaks when it does it, and you can take it, add in all the muscles, everything, take it back, all the way to the whole thing. They're actually live cadavers scanned into software. There's case studies and all different things we can do with them, and they'll compete with their HOSA with these for bones. It's all touchscreen and interactive with them. You can do like different case studies. We use them in all of our programs over there.
Does every student have one?
We have 12 currently, and I have 16 seniors and approximately 20 juniors, but they share very well and it works together very well, so they're versatile with them. So they're...
Can you isolate, like, let's just say if you wanted to isolate the central nervous system?
Yep, you can isolate it out, and it tells you what's in them. And then when you click on the different things, you can hear that, it tells you like what they are.
Tells you what it is?
And all of that, and then they have flashcards and different multiple choice that they can work on to study, that they'll actually compete against other schools in our area for.
Hello, my name is Kylie Surtick. I am a senior at Corin High School. And before I joined this program, I wasn't really sure what I wanted to do, but with the guidance of Ms. Mitchell, I have found that I really do enjoy nursing, and with her help of passing my STNA this year, I was able to get a job at Northgate Park Assisted Living, and I'm an aide there. I help people with their daily activities, like brushing their teeth, showering, eating, dressing, all, everything that you do throughout your day, I help them with. And I am just very grateful and excited to be in this program. In the spring, we're going to start moving towards our HOSA program, and I'm the president. Phalak is our treasurer, and Trinity is our vice president. And I, when I go off to college, I'm definitely going to continue my major in nursing and hopefully make it further in the medical field with this boost that I have from being in this program.
Hi, my name is Phalak Jengir. I'm from Syria. I'm a senior at Corin High School in the Butler Tech Program for Healthcare. Living in the refugee camps where there was a lack of medical treatment that was, we received, made medical field my number-one goal and choice in life. Coming to America, not knowing any English, not knowing where to start, and I had to start somewhere, so getting accepted to the medical, getting accepted, sorry, getting accepted to the Butler Tech program was a big opportunity for me. We will be receiving our STNA certification and phlebotomy certification from the program. The whole, the class in general, we had our ups and downs with the class, with Ms. Mitchell's help, joining us in February, brought us all back together where a lot of us did lost hope in the program, but she brought everyone back together and brought hope back to our program. And my classmate is not just, we're not just friends and classmates. To me, I've been with them for almost two years now, we're not, they're family to me. Ms. Mitchell, we have Mr. Trentman, we're all a family now. I would give a big thank you to Ms. Mitchell, to Mr. Trentman, and to all my classmates for all of us coming back together, and hopefully we all graduate together. And yeah, that's all I have tonight. Also, we will be having a blood draw, drive, on January. Anyone's welcome, and our, our Colrain, so yeah, that too. Thank you. Any questions?
Well, first, your story is very inspiring.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, you guys, awesome job, great leaders in your program and your school. Where do you work now, or what?
I also work with Kylie at the nursing home, nursing, the Assistant Living at Northgate.
Awesome.
Yeah.
It's great to see the experience you're getting in class and at work. You're going to be just light years ahead of where you would be without that, so, awesome.
Are you going to go to college?
Yes. I would love to.
Have you decided yet which one?
Yes, I start, I want to start pre-med, but like I said, with the certification we will be receiving from Butler Tech will start me somewhere, and it will be a great start for me, to be in college and having a good job at the same time.
She applied at UC.
Oh, I've had a UC, yeah, University of Cincinnati.
Okay.
Yeah.
For a pre-med there?
Yes, pre-med program.
STNA is probably one of the most underfilled positions in healthcare.
I was the director of nursing before I came to Butler Tech, so.
You get great experience at Northgate Park, they do a great job there.
Yes, we love the people. They're very nice. Any other questions for us?
They did say they have their phlebotomy, they always are looking for people for life sticks.
Yes. Anyone's welcome. Love to do life sticks.
What day is that?
So the blood drive is with Popsworth, and that will be January 19th, but they actually draw in class. They'll be starting the Monday that we return from the holiday, and they need people because they have to get 50 life sticks before they sign off on their certification. So trying to find that many people or that many family members to come in that many times is difficult, so we're always looking for volunteers.
Yes, thank you, girls. Great job, thank you.
All right, Matt, student achievement?
That's a good thing.
Again, forgive me on the names, I'm going to do my best with some of these more unusual names. In November, congratulations to the Colrain and Northwest High School student teams who took home first and second place at the Sixth Annual Business Competition held at Mount St. Joseph University. Congratulations to Northwest Local School District band students who will be participating in the OMEA Honors Band. On Monday, November 13th, over 300 of the top musicians from high schools and middle schools throughout Hamilton and Claremont Counties auditioned for the OMVA District 14 Honor Band. Judges for every instrument selected the best performers. One of our students, Matthew H., received first chair, top performer on his instrument in two counties. At the middle school level, we have Evelyn S., alto sax; Marissa A., flute; Matthew H., tuba; Dasheel S., flute; Robert W., horn. At the high school level, we have Brandon G. on the French horn; Chris R., tuba; Elliott H., percussion; Julian K., percussion; AJS, trombone. At Northwest High School, and Katie O., clarinet. At Corin Elementary, PBUS update, Corin Elementary students participated in flybys. 18 students have earned recognition for the highest points in their grade level. These students were recognized by our deans during lunch. Also, our latest PBUS pop-up event lasted three weeks. Focus of the event was appropriate behavior in common areas. 67 students participated in a pop-up party reward. Back in October, at Pleasant Run Middle School, each month, we are recognizing 25 students school-wide who embody what it means to show Knight pride. Staff recognized students who demonstrated one or more of the pride characteristics. The selected students were recognized at lunch with a certificate and a t-shirt. Each month, a new group of students will be recognized. Here are October Students of the Month. Jeric Hale, Brooklyn Guimer, Maddie Thomas, Danielle Flores Torres, Mario Wisdom, Annabelle Whaley Leon, Asa Craig, Amira Jasmiel, Joseph Booker, Olivia Klosterman, Judith Rodriguez Castro, Quentin Marshall, Maximiliano Martinez Salgado, Anthony Silva Bravo, Davion Price, Catherine Chikai, Antonio Calcano, Neela Mace, Samaz Jackson, Shirley Tamang, Lily Kohler, Josh Godbold, Haley Woods, and Madeline Lycan. Congratulations to those Students of the Month. At Struble Elementary, a student from each homeroom was recognized at the monthly character breakfast on October 6th. Struble students are recognized for following the Blue Jay Way and exhibiting good character. Students and a member of his or her family celebrated with a special breakfast and recognition ceremony. Each student received an award and a t-shirt. Also at Struble Elementary, in Ms. Bruneman's classroom, Grade III students are working on reading passages and answering extended response questions. This extra practice during wind block with comprehension and writing will support student success. Students also participate in Genius Hour. Students are permitted to select an appropriate topic to research and then complete a written report. Additionally, students create Google Slide presentations to share with classmates. Genius Hour is a great opportunity for students to learn about new things and practice life skills. Our Grade III teaching team hosted a fall family event by planning an evening where students and parents created a pumpkin together, and then wrote a story using the pumpkin as the main character. We saw lots of creativity and smiles as families enjoyed the writing time together. On November 1st and 2nd, the 5th graders from Struble Elementary celebrated everything they've learned about the solar system with field trips to the Hill Planetarium at Northern Kentucky University. Students took a campus tour to learn all about college life, then were treated to a show in the planetarium all about the planets and other objects in our solar system. They had a blast, and they made us proud with how well they followed the Blue Jay Way while out in the community. Also at Pleasant Run Middle School, congratulations to the Pleasant Run Middle School 7th grade volleyball team for being the SWAC tournament runner-up. That's what I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Anything else for Butler Tech?
Yeah, just want to, I just want to again thank Chris Trentman for bringing his health tech students in, they do a great job. And just that the ACTE, which is the National Career Tech meetings that we have, just like we were up at the OSBA in Columbus this past week, we have 10 groups presenting out at the national conference in Phoenix, November 28 through December the 1st, which is the most that I've seen from any one particular school district. So we're doing a great job, and I'll report more when we get back at the next meeting in December. So, but just, and if there's anybody that wants to get like a tour or whatever, just give me a call and I can set it up, and you know, if parents want to, you know, come and check it out and see, see what's all available ahead of time, because they usually do that in the spring, but if they want to do that, just contact me and I'll get it set up for them. And that, that's it.
Thank you. Chris, legislate about that?
Nicole, nothing really legislatively, but there's something of interest out of Columbus. The executive director of Ohio's $90 billion STRS fund has been suspended by the board. This is the same board that gave millions of dollars to the people who run investments last year while giving teachers a 1% cost of living increase. Anyway, the director, I won't mention his name, it's in the newspaper though if you want to find it, alleges that he abused staff and had violent outbursts on a regular basis, at some points throwing furniture and office materials when he became upset. There was also allegations of sexual harassment and directly threatening employees with physical violence. Sounds like some of my past bosses. But he's been on administrative leave, and I'm not sure where that's going to come from. It all started with an anonymous letter, which, you know, I don't know, it just seems like, you know, getting an anonymous letter seems a little drastic, but there's probably people who have substantiated it. So that's it.
All right, thanks, Chris. Thank you. Do we have any reports from employees?
None tonight.
We did not receive any community comment cards?
For the consent items tonight, we'll start with human resources.
Good evening. We seek approval for the following: nine resignations, two retirements, eight initial appointments, one change in status, various supplemental items, and a resolution of job abandonment.
We have two donations: Northwest Community Church to the district for health fare supplies, and a meritous donation of $5,000 to Struble Elementary. We have several vendor contracts for special education, Kid Whisperer Conference, music, expulsion officer, Life Touch Pictures, and SEL supports.
Good evening. We're asking this evening for approval of an increased AP Seminar exam fee. It is a new course that we're offering, and the fee is more than what we have on our current approved fee list. And then we are also asking your permission for the, for a new course for Honors Algebra I. This is a new level of the course. We've been offering it as an advanced level course. We'd like to offer Honors Algebra I at our middle schools for 8th graders or 7th graders who are ready. And then we also, if we have enough students who need to be in an algebra, Honors Algebra section at the high school, we'd like to be able to offer that as well.
With that, the superintendent recommends the board approve the consent items as listed. Move.
Motion in a second. Any discussion?
Brenda, how much did that fee, what was it normally? What did it go up to?
So the AP exam fees are $98.
How much?
$98, but the AP seminar fee is $146.
And the kids have to pay that?
Unless there are financial reasons why they cannot.
With the honors, the algebra, will that, so advanced would stay for the 8th graders? You would continue to have that, or?
We would, we would be offering Honors Algebra I at the middle schools in place of Advanced Algebra I.
Okay. Would there still just be one class of it, or would it be dependent on test scores and?
Yeah, depends on number of sections needed, based on the number of students who are eligible for the course, looking at previous testing history as well as academic performance.
Okay, but it could increase if there were enough kids eligible for it?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And then, can you talk a little bit about what the Kid Whisperer Conference is, or?
Yeah, that's a conference that is, we use our location. It's Scott Urban, it's a behavior management strategy for elementary, and so it teaches behavior modification strategies, classroom management strategies. It's a very proactive approach, and by hosting it, all of our teachers get to attend for free, and anyone from outside districts pay to attend. So it becomes self-sustaining over time because so many people from the outside are, regionally are trying to get to this information. A lot of our teachers who have been through that have experienced a lot of success with being able to kind of proactively manage a lot of the classroom and building-level behaviors. So it's been very successful at elementary, and we've had a lot of positive feedback.
So is that, that's something we do each year?
Yeah, yeah, this is renewal. We've been doing it for about three years.
Okay, great, thank you. Any other questions? Pass this five to zero. Thank you, guys.
Good evening. Firstly, I'd like to ask the board to dispense with reading of and approve the regular meeting October 23rd, 23rd, board meeting minutes. We have our financial reports for the month of October. Our all-funds balance is $91.5 million. Our general fund unreserved balance is $50.9 million. Our revenues year-to-date is $45.9 million, or 46%, and our expenditures year-to-date are $30.8 million, or 30% for the year. Our investment-weighted average return is 4.21%. And for our monthly bills, we have our routine monthly bills, as well as we had some professional development, our workers' comps, self-insurance premium, Corin High School renovations, some bus supplies and repairs, and our auxiliary and grant fund payments. And we need to accept, approve, and appropriate two funds this evening. One is for our new ski club at Corin High School, and we also received a re- One is for our new ski club at Corinne High School and we also received a reth, we thrive grant from Hamilton County Department of Health. We need to accept the minute certificate of estimated resources from the Hamilton County Budget Commission. This is a response to when we submitted our permanent appropriations that we approved in September. This is for $233 million. We need to approve our annual resolutions for a modified tax budget. So each year in January, municipalities, counties, cities, school districts all have to file a tax budget with the Hamilton County Budget Commission, but because we're on a fiscal year, they allow us to file a modified tax budget, which allows us just to file for our tax funds, which is general fund and a debt service fund and our permanent improvement funds. It allows them to see our need and what milage to assess. And then we have our annual resolution authorizing tax advances to be collected from the Hamilton County Auditor's Office. So what this allows me to do is request on a weekly basis for the Hamilton County Auditor's Office to send the district the tax monies that they've collected to date until they do their final settlement. So with that, I'd like to ask the board to approve the consent items as listed.
You move.
Second.
Questions?
So as you can see the number on the screen, and if you remember, a few meetings ago, John Graff came and he said that 45% of the current jobs will not be around any longer and 65% of the jobs by 2037 have not even been imagined. So our job is to continue to live our mission where we challenge, where we create a responsive learning environment to challenge, guide, and support our students and value them along their pathway of success. We do this through our strategic plan and one of the pillars of our strategic plan is financial stability. But when you look at financial stability, our strategic objectives were to encourage two-way communication so that our community knows how our schools are funded, how we utilize our funds, and what our needs are. We also show how we are aligning our district resources to our instructional priorities and how we're developing a transparent funding cycle with our community. But when we do our annual survey, financial stability is the lowest response and it's actually gone down since last year. And when I've asked questions as to why, I get responses because we've had two bond issues or we asked for levies or the wages that we're paying our staff. So I wanted to dive into financial stability a little more tonight also. And to start with that, we need to think about the way schools are funded. So in the state of Ohio, the state looks at what the local capacity of a community is between their property and income wealth. They determine that amount, the basic education funding formula, and then they, the state pays the difference. So the state considers Northwest a wealthy community and expects our local community to currently pay at least 70% of basic education and 100% of anything above basic education, including things like our honors programs, our athletics, and even infrastructure and So it's not a matter of if we need levies, it's a matter of when. But we also do a lot of planning. It's not just a plan that we create and set on a shelf. It's we're doing deep dives into various things and planning to make sure that we're looking long-term. And we use this planning for also our day-to-day operations. For financial stability, we want to make sure that we're carefully monitoring and controlling our expenditures, that we have cost savings measures and economies of scale. We use co-op programs and we're also wanting to make sure we stay in compliance. When you're out of compliance, you have additional fees, penalties, and fines that are charged against the district. But we also want to, when we're authorizing expenditures, we want to make sure that we're planning and we're forecasting and we're benchmarking our expenditures and not just doing the ones of today. So with planning, we have our 3% partnership with our community that says we will not increase our operational expenditures more than 3% per year. We also have a cash reserve balance policy that says we'll maintain at least 60% 60 days of cash on hand and that will look at having a five mil, five-year levy cycle. So it's a rolling levy cycle that we need to be able to maintain it. That way we'll have smaller levies, smaller milage. And we are always aligning our resources to our instructional priorities. Cash balance policies allow us to protect the community and staff from unexpected changes in the economy such as state cuts, recessions, and even inflation. There are one-time expenditures, natural disasters, and capital needs that we may need to do. And by having a cash balance reserve, we can earn investment income and also have a higher bond rating, both of which saves our community money. So with forecasting, we come to you and to the community twice a year in November and we do an update in May to give a five-year forecast. We're not only looking at the current year, but we're projecting our current operations out five years, the next four years. We have a textbook replacement schedule. We have a bus replacement schedule. We have a technology replacement schedule and we have a capital maintenance plan that I'll talk about later tonight. When it comes to benchmarking and internal metrics, we're allocating our resources to our instructional priorities and we're making sure that we're spending at least 70% on instruction and no more than 10% on administrative and office expenditures. We also have class size targets and staffing plans that we use for our operations. We have a per pupil or per staff budget that we allocate out and we also do things like square feet budgets for custodial maintenance. In last year, our instruction was 72%. Our operations were at 21% and our administration was at 7%. So we're continually monitoring where we're at with things. And then our resolution of the community partnerships says that we'll cap our annual growth for our operations at 3%. We'll have a continuous commitment to student achievement and we'll maintain the community's investment in its facilities, technology, infrastructure, and also provide tools to teach in the 21st century. So with our facilities, we have six buildings that are over 50 years old and need replaced. We have safety and security upgrades that are needed. Any renovations that we were to, are to do, we'll need to bring our buildings up to ADA compliance, which takes smaller projects and makes them bigger projects in order to bring things up to code. We currently have $40 million in deferred maintenance in our facilities, not including Corinne Elementary or Corinne Middle School. And our middle schools are currently over capacity. We're using every inch of the buildings and we're still out of space. So for our continuous communication, we put out a PAFR each year and we send that out to our entire community. We have an annual budget document, which we released this past fall and we plan to release that every summer to start the new year. Annual budget document aligns our goals and strategies for instruction to our budgets and we do this by building and department. You can find the document on our website if you're looking for that. We also have our November and May forecast and we have our annual CAFR and financial statements that we release out. So we're always trying to inform our community how our schools are funded, how our funds are spent, and what our needs are as a district. So tonight with our five-year forecast update, our community has passed two emergency levies. One which will expire in 2027 and one will expire in 2029. And without these levies, we will either need to somehow increase additional revenue or reduce operations. We are currently using both of these for day-to-day operations. So what is the operational impact to our financial stability? On our financial stability? Our revenues, about two-thirds of our revenues are from our local community, either through property taxes or through tax credits paid for by the state. And a third of our revenue comes from the state. We also receive additional funds through tuition, interest, and the green township residential So again, 70% is coming from our local community. Drivers of our revenue are property valuations and new construction. So when you're above the 20 mil floor, taxes are flat when passed. However, when you go to the 20 mil floor or below, the 20 mil floor is the minimum mils that the state requires a local community to pay for their district. As property values increase, milage decreases. When it gets to 20 mils or below, the auditor has to roll it back up to 20 and take 20 mils times the current valuation. This is when school districts see growth. For above the 20 mils, which we currently are, taxes are flat when passed. Revaluation, reappraisal that's happening right now should take us to the 20 mil floor for residential property only. There's also legislative action that changes revenue. State can change the funding formula. They can make state cuts and reduce funding. Anytime during the year when the pandemic hit, they reduced our funding $1.8 million in May. Our year ends in June. And then enrollment. Enrollment is a big driver on the funding formula. So for property taxes, our current valuation is 1.7 billion or $1.7 million per mil. We just exceeded our valuation from 2005 in 2020. Because of the Great Recession, valuation decreased and we just got back to where we were in 2005. Had we been on the floor and 20 mils on current valuation, we would have received less revenue from 2005 till 23 than we did in 2005. With the reappraisal, there are a few things going on. There's several bills up in the state house that they're trying to either reduce the 20 mil floor, which if they reduce it, we will not be on the 20 mil floor. They're talking about 18. So we still will not see any growth. It could be the 35% that was sent out to our community or it could be somewhere in between. We've heard of House Bill 187, about 18%. So in the forecast today, we went to the middle. We didn't go to the zero growth because we're hopeful we'll have growth. We also didn't go to the 35% growth because there are several bills to keep that from happening. So we went to the middle. And then our triennial update will be in 2026. So as I said, our real, current real estate taxes were at 21.95 mils for residential and 29.72 mils for commercial. But our community has voted in 58.7 mils. That's that rollback factor. As valuation increases, milage decreases so that the amount that's collected is the same as when it's passed until you hit the 20 mil floor. So for the forecast, we're projecting about 53 million for our property taxes and this is about $580,000 increase or about a 1% increase in revenue. Our personal property taxes, our valuation is 74 million. Personal property is paid at the full voted milage, so the whole 58 mils. So we collect about $4 million a year and this is about a 3% increase or about $152,000. For our state funding, the current state funding formula has been increased to basic cost inputs of 2022. So they're funding the formula based on expenses from fiscal year '22 for fiscal years '24 and '25. So the funding formula is always behind and they're also, the state's funding the formula at 50%. So while they're supposed to be giving us $2,300 per student or $2,600 per student, we get about $1,300 per student because the state's funding is only at 50%. And we talked about revenue drivers. Here's our enrollment. After the pandemic, our enrollment decreased and is projected to maintain relatively stable throughout the five-year forecast. Unrestricted revenue is our foundation formula or state funding. The total funding formula for basic education is a little over $8,000 per student. Again, the state looks at local capacity, local property value, local income, so that they determine what should a local community pay, should pay for basic education and they pay the difference. And right now that's at 32%. Throughout the five-year forecast though, as property values go up, state revenue goes down. So we're looking at state share of 25% by the end of the five-year forecast. And again, instead of the 2,600, we're only currently collecting the 1,300, but locally our community still has to pay the 5,400 in local property taxes. And then make up the difference that the state does not pay. So the foundation formula did increase 12% and this was because of the change from being a, from a third to 50% of the state funding formula being paid and then going to, from So 70% is still on our local community and remember, as property values go up, as property taxes continue to increase, the state revenue decreases. We also have restricted aid. So some of these items in the past were not restricted. We were unrestricted revenue from the state, but the state changed in the latest Fair School Funding Formula to make gifted English language learners and success and wellness restricted general fund dollars. So they pulled dollars that we have already, always received and restricted what we could spend them on. DPIA is about $4 million a year and that's for poverty, safety, and mental and physical supports. Success and wellness, again, for mental and physical supports. Our gifted services, it's only for identification and testing. It's not for teachers to teach gift, our gifted students. And same with our English language learners. It's more for identification services. So we get about $6 million in restricted funds, part of that 2,300 that the state is Property tax allocation is the tax credits that the state pays on behalf of property owners. We have, there's the 10% rollback, there's the two and a half percent homestead, and then the homestead exemption for our seniors that are 65 and older and also have income eligibility. We do not receive and our community does not benefit from property tax credits for anything after 2013. So our one mil 2015 continuing levy and our emergency levy in 2019, neither of those qualify for tax credits. We receive about $5 million annually in tax credits from the state. And as we discussed earlier, we do receive other revenue sources such as donations, tuition, interest. We have our green township TIF for residential properties and we also have Medicaid and E-rate reimbursements from the previous year. So that was our revenues. Now for our operations. Our expenditures were about 80% of the industry trend is on personnel, salaries, and benefits. When we look at expense drivers, there's inflation. Inflation tries to drive expenses for everybody in the nation and also Northwest Local School District. So we also have special education costs and these costs are for students that need tuition, maybe to other districts, and also related services. Those costs are charged from outside entities that are beyond our control. And then poverty. Poverty, students in poverty do require sometimes additional supports, which drive additional costs. So for our personnel services, this is our salaries and wages, staff's extra time, overtime. Our raises are per negotiated contracts and there's also trend based into the five-year forecast as well as our supplemental contracts. So we're projecting about $61 million in our salaries line and that's about 58% of our operating budget. So it's salaries and benefits. So the benefits related to our personnel, we have retirement, which is 14%. We have Medicare, the 1.45. We also have our health, dental, and life insurance premiums. And then we have our workers' comp severance and health insurance premium set-asides. So we keep our health insurance at 5% throughout the five-year forecast. If actual premiums come in above, we pay it out of our set-aside. If actual premiums come in below, we pay the difference into our set-aside. That way we have a flat amount in our five-year forecast. So we're projecting about $21 million in our employee benefits or about 20% of our budget. So we're at 78% and the trend is 80% for school districts on salaries and benefits. Purchased services are, is our other large item. Utilities are about 1.8 million and we do project this as a dollar 41 per square foot. We allot for our utilities, all utilities, and then we stay within that budget. Special education and related service. Special education and related services is about $10 million. And our special education services increased 6% this year. Now remember, our operational, uh, growth cap is 3%. So just one item, three, $10 million increased 6% in one year. We have repairs, we have professional services, we have our insurance. We also have homeless and foster transportation, unfunded mandate. That's 1.5 million dollars a year and increasing. And then we have sub-services about a million dollars. So it's almost $18 million is spent on purchased services or about 17% of our budget. Supplies and materials, so student materials, teacher, library, office materials, custodial, cleaning and health and hygiene, paper towels, toilet paper, maintenance parts and transportation, fuel, parts or tires are all in supplies and materials. But sometimes people think, well, you can just reduce, reduce your paper, reduce the, it, that's 3% of our budget. About $3 million is spent district-wide on our supplies and materials. And then capital outlay is less than 1%. Most of our capital outlay is spent out of our permanent improvement fund, such as our bus technology and building repairs. So this is about $380,000. And then our other line item, which is about 1.5 million dollars, about 2% of our operating budget, utter and treasurer fees. So the utter and treasurer per higher revise code, keep a percentage of our taxes collected. We also have our annual compliance and financial audit as well as some awards and memberships. Other financing sources and uses, we have our transfers out for transportation for athletic programs. So that's that transfer we approve every January, $60,000 that go to our high school and middle schools. We have our board service fund transfer and then we also have student fee waivers. So student fees that are waived throughout the year, the general fund has to pay for that cost. And then advances out, this is where at the end of the year, state and federal grants cannot end in a negative balance. So we, we advance the monies at year end to advance it back when we open the next year. So it's a timing thing. So it's about $200,000 a year or less than 1% of our operating budget. Some of the changes we've seen since November of 2019, and the reason I have that date is that was our last operating levy. We, we reduced our operations by 2.6 million dollars. That was a promise we made to our community when we asked for the levy and, and we did that. The pandemic shut us down, so we had some savings that spring. We've had a few years of staffing shortages, so we've had some unfilled positions. And remember, we have a staffing plan. So when positions are not filled, that cost that we would have had goes back into our cash balance. We had some federal ESER funding, which was pandemic relief funding. So we were able to shift some positions into that federal money and also some costs. When, that we're coming to the end of those funds. And so those positions during the five-year forecast are being shifted back into general fund if they were there previously. But we did not add any positions. We have a new state funding formula. We've talked about the new fair, fair school funding formula. Interest rates have increased and property evaluations have increased. And as we've talked, we have a cash balance policy to protect our community, to offset one-time expenditures and to be able to invest and also increase our, um, bond rating to save our community money. Our unreserved fund balance, we're, we're looking to time that five-year, five-year rolling levy cycle and also have our 60 days cash on hand. And so as we've talked, since 2019, we've been able to build up a larger cash balance than what we had projected previously. But we have needs. And so to match needs with one-time monies instead of adding it to just general operations and growing our operations, one, more than our 3%. Or two, having operations that are unsustainable because we're trying to take one-time money and attach to ongoing operations. We're recommending that we transfer $10 million of our cash balance, that one-time money that we were able to build up since 2019, to be able to address the deferred maintenance at Monford Heights as well as fund our capital maintenance plan that I said we've developed, which is our three new elementary schools. And then with this $10 million, we'd be able to pull in Monford Heights Elementary and then maintain those four buildings going into the future. When we look at our operating cycle, the red line is our expenses, the blue line is our revenue. So as you can see, when levies are passed, the blue line goes up and then stays pretty flat. And then expenditures over time exceed our revenue and then we have to come back. So that's why I said it's not a matter of if we need a levy, it's a matter of when and how long we can postpone the need. The green line is our cash balance and the black line is our cash balance policy. So in 2019, we were dipping down into our cash balance policy. We asked for new revenue. Our community gave it to us, but at the same time, we had a lot of other factors as we've just gone over, happened since then. So when we look at our five-year forecast, we do start deficit spending in 2027. So we want to, um, align our revenues and our expenditures. But with expenditures growing and revenue being flat over time, you start into deficit spending. Without the 2027 emergency levy, if it's not renewed or operations are not decreased, our operation, operating deficit in 2028 goes from 400,000 to 4 million. Having cash balance and one-time money doesn't help when we have operational deficits. We need to align our revenues and our expenditures so that we can have an operationally be at least zero or positive. When we start deficit spending, we're eating into that cash balance carryover, which is one time on ongoing operations. So we either need to increase revenue or reduce operations. So this is just another way to look at it. The blue is our revenue, the red is our expenditure. So you can see over time, our expenditures increase. And the green is where we'll need additional revenue in order to meet our expenses. So when we're looking at financial stability, we want to make sure we're creating a strong foundation of financial stability that ensures that we have an optimal learning environment and experience for all of our students. We're also making sure that we're looking at student achievement or resource allocation and operational efficiency, all at the same time. So for our operating levy cycles, in 2021, the board approved a resolution of community partnership, which said that we would need to come back to our community in 2024, which is this November, which we did not. We've been able to postpone that out till fiscal year 2028. But again, it's not a matter of if we'll need a levy, but a matter of when. And we continue to look each year at our operations. If we can postpone it out, we will, as we have. When you look at 2037, that's our current kindergarten class. 65% of the jobs in 2037 have not yet been imagined. And it's our job in the next 13 years to get them where they need to be, so they're ready and they're prepared for the future. You have any questions?
Thank you, Amy.
What's it take to get below the 20 mil floor? And is that even possible in our district? Will that, will that, if that would happen, would that bring in more money to the district?
Yes, in the current five-year forecast, we, we get to the 20 mil floor.
That kind of, that kind of leads to one of my questions was, so, uh, based on the reevaluations, then we'll drop below the 20 mil floor? And as a result, if I saw correctly, you're projecting a $579,000 increase?
Yes, because we have to get to the 20 mil first. When we get below, you get the growth from, from below to the 20 mil floor.
So the growth you're projecting?
It's $580,000.
1%.
It's like half of 1% of our budget. And, uh, it's just important to note because, you know, like all of us up here are residents and our average home values are going up 36%. But that doesn't translate to, you know, the school district's getting 30, 36% more dollars. The school district's getting less than half of, or about half of 1% increase of our budget.
Part, part of that is also the legislature and all the laws that are currently being bounced around up in Columbus right now. So we went with the middle, remember? We didn't go with reducing the 20 mil floor, which would, we wouldn't get there, so that's zero growth. We didn't go at the whole 35% increase because there, uh, House Bill 187 and there are a few others that are currently being bounced around, whether or not they'll get passed before year end. So we're probably with, if it goes all the way to the 35%, it gets us to the 20 mil floor and then dips below, we could get a few million dollars, which will come back in, uh, early spring prior to the May forecast. Once we have a finite answer and do an update so that we can present an updated forecast to our state.
Amy, you said that the, um, uh, cash reserves were higher than projected. How much higher are they or is it right now with the reserves than, than what it was projected to be?
Well, we would have needed to go out for a levy, so we would have been about 25 million and we're around 40 million.
So we have 40 million right now, um, in reserves. And normally that's two months and that's, that sounds like more than two months to me.
Right, we've spent about 8 million a month.
Okay, so it's five months.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Which is also why we've talked about the $10 million transfer, one-time money to one-time expense.
Thank you.
For that 10 million, um, can you just talk about why that would go towards maintaining the newer schools in Monford Heights and not, why we could not use that to do any of the updates to Corinell or Corin Middle?
We could, it's just not what I'm recommending. And the reason is because if we put it into Corinne Elementary and then have to tear it down because it is literally falling down, we're putting good money into something we have many needs in our district. By having a capital improve, maintenance plan to fund our buildings in the future, we won't get in the situation we're at today where we've not maintained our buildings in the past. So our three new elementaries and Monford Heights Elementary. We've also heard from our community, the deferred maintenance on Monford Heights Elementary. It's 25 years old, what he needs, it has needs, warm, safe and dry. We need to make sure we keep our buildings warm, safe and dry and maintained going forward. So that's why I'm recommending that we've create, created a plan and then we fund the plan. In the next 10 years, there's $26 million of maintenance for those four buildings and we're transferring 10 million.
Thank you. And then the spend per student, um, where do we fit in with the other schools? You talked about the standard, the state, the 8100 and that.
So $8100 is the amount funded through the funding formula. We're, um, we're the lowest in Hamilton County for fiscal year 23.
Say that again.
We're the lowest in Hamilton County for fiscal year 23. And we're below state average.
And the state portion of the per pupil income, if I saw correctly on the slide, that roughly 2,200, but actually 1,200, what was that?
Yes, so per the formula, it's 2,600, but what we receive is 50%. So we're receiving $1,300 per student. Compared to, uh, the voucher program, which is $6,000 per elementary and $8,000 for high school.
And we're getting, they're, they're getting 6,000 and 8,000, we're getting 1,300?
Yes.
That seems fair.
Wow.
That's ridiculous.
Right, the 2643, but actually 1321.
Yeah, 2643 is in the formula. That's the amount the state should be paying, they're paying 50%. Last year they paid 33%. The year before that, they paid 16%. Next year they'll pay 66%.
Thank you, thank you so much for putting together this, like, just so much. It's incredible what, you know, what you present with the five-year forecast, so, thank you.
So Amy, really, this kind of feels like the Apollo 13 mission, um, where they had one shot to shoot around the moon and survive. And they had this team of NASA scientists that used toilet paper rolls and everything to bring a sat, a rocket back to Earth. Like that seems to be about our only approach at fixing this because the state is not going to correct anything. That, like, that's not a revenue stream that we're ever going to be able to rely on. The other option is we go to our citizens who are struggling financially with the economy. And then the only other option is we have to change our business, our book of business here. So like, I would personally like to see, you know, we do go above and beyond. We have, we have certain, uh, students that have quite a bit of needs that, and, and please don't interpret that I'm complaining about that. But at, at some point, when you look at the enrollment slide, our enrollment just kept going down. Like, when do we right-size the school district? Do we need less buildings? Do we need less teachers? Do we need less classes? Like, where do we adjust this? I mean, I, I look at this from balancing my checkbook at home. You know, we, we don't, we can't afford DirecTV, we don't get DirecTV. So we just can't sit here and, and hope that money comes in or hope that a levy passes. We have to make some, some changes somewhere.
So we do, we look at our operations each year. And what we've done is we've created a staffing plan based on class size targets, based on the positions that we need. So each year, when we look at what's our estimated enrollment for the next year and by grade level, by building, and then that's how we staff. We don't just staff because we had staff last year, we have staff next, staff next year. We do it based on class size targets and our staffing plan.
Can you go back to that slide where it shows the enrollment? Okay, so, so 2023, we have 8,014 students in our district, is that correct?
Yeah, now this is FTEs. We're funded on percentages of students by day. We're not funded on butts and seats for the year. So as students come and go, the percentage of time is what we're funded on. So that's not, these are not our students in our district. We also have Butler Tech students.
Right.
So this is the percentage of time we have of them. Not that Butler Tech has. So we have more students than this, this is what we're funded on.
How many students do we have in our district right now?
Probably more around 8,500.
8,500, so we're, you're about 500 off of what that's actually showing. 500 additional students that are Butler Tech students?
Or portions of.
Portions of.
If they've got a class, if they're half-day.
Okay, so it looks like the next five years, we're going to be kind of flat. I mean, maybe between 100 and 200 less kids. And then up and down, it just kind of goes up and down. Yeah, yeah, it's hard, yeah. Okay, all right.
Also hard to say with all the new construction that we have in the district as far as how many, how many kids we'll acquire from the new houses.
Right, but our estimated enrollment was based on the CROPA report that was supposed, took into account the housing developments.
Any other questions for Amy? All right.
We'll continue to keep monitoring. Thank you.
Thanks a lot, Amy.
Thanks, Amy.
Thanks. That was uplifting.
Sorry.
It's just nauseating.
So with that, I'd like to ask the board to approve the five-year forecast and the related assumptions that explain each of our line items in the five-year forecast.
If we don't approve it, do we not have to go through it?
Required to be filed with the, the, somewhere in Columbus, not due.
Second.
Any other questions?
Amy, so that includes the 10 million?
Correct.
Okay, um, Amy, could you pull those pictures up I sent you? Okay, Amy, could you pull those pictures up I sent you? I was going to put this under board items, but I, I think it's important and we see it now. Books, I was over at Colrain for the craft show. When I sold my last house, the realtor told me the most important thing to make sure it looks good is your front door. Well, our front door at Colrain, which is our flagship building in my opinion, always has been, it's the biggest school, is not in good shape. Now, as you walk up into the plaza, the steps are fine, you can look at the pictures up there, those obviously have been redone. Amy, if you'll go to the next picture. The whole thing looks like that, if not worse. What a front door, it is absolutely a mess. It gives you a very bad first impression. Chris estimates about $175,000 to have it fixed. Amy, if you'll go to the next picture if you would please. You can see it's all over the plaza, the benches are in good shape. There's one bench that needs wood replaced, somebody broke off a piece, but otherwise the benches are in very good shape. Next picturing, just another picture, and you can see it's, it's all over the walkway there. And then go to the final picture. Some of these holes are so bad, somebody's going to twist an ankle and we're going to have a lawsuit. So what I'd like to do, if we could, since that 10 million is pretty firm for, for Monfort Heights, it just seems logical to me that we replace our front door. And since we have 15 more in our, our emergency fund than we need, that we add another 200,000 and get the front door fixed at Colrain High School in this motion, have it done sometime this year. But to me, this is just unacceptable. It's awful looking, it's a bad first impression, and somebody's going to get hurt. And, and there's more pictures I could have taken. Mark, did you look at it? Did you go over there and see?
I haven't had a chance yet.
Yeah, but you can see, it's, it's not just a few things, it's the whole thing. And Chris estimates, Chris would, 200 with maybe the, the walkway you talked about in the middle, get it done.
Yeah, it should.
Okay, so I'd like to amend that to 1.10, 10.2 million to do the Monfort Heights. If Monfort Heights is getting 10, it's a 25-year-old building, certainly we can afford an extra 200,000 for a 50-year-old building or a 60-year-old building. Colrain is going to be 60 years old next year. So I, I hope, can I make that amendment, that we, we change that to 10.2?
Are you wanting to, sorry, you're wanting to amend the five-year forecast to increase expenditures?
Increase the expenditure that was for Monfort Heights to 10 million, to 10.2 million. So we could also repair the front door at Monfort Heights, or at Colrain High School.
This isn't for the transfer, and it's not just for Monfort Heights, it's to fund our capital maintenance plan, which is for buildings.
Somehow get this incorporated in it.
So, so you can amend the forecast to increase the expenses?
Include fixing the plaza, the student plaza at Colrain High School.
Well, I got, I got a question before you do that. What do the other schools look like, as you, you know, that's going to be my question. What do the other schools look like that would need something like that? I mean, is that, do we, Chris, do we know, or?
I think, I think you know from walking around all the buildings, all schools have needs. Some are worse than others, but that area is worse.
Do you think that needs to be addressed first?
Yeah, if you recall, in 2020, we had a concrete project where we replaced a lot of concrete around the building, some of that being at Colrain High School. This was one area that we couldn't afford at that time. So, yes, it is an area needing attention.
Do you think that should be done first before any, any other schools are, the needs are there greatly more?
I, I think we need to put some money into all the facilities, yeah.
We also have those things that you can see, but we also have a lot of things that you can't see that we fix on an ongoing basis. Not to mention other needs around safety and security that money could be allocated toward as well. So I think although it is visible, it is, doesn't look great, and it does need work. There are a lot of other things district-wide that also need to be looked at as well.
So for instance, we've spent tens of thousands of dollars on sewage lines at Corin High School, water mains at Corin High School, Northwest High School. So these are things that if we don't take care of them soon, we don't go to school in those buildings.
Those things are a higher priority than fixing the concrete?
Correct, we don't go to school in those buildings.
When we had the emergency issues, like at Corin Middle School, we had the sewage issue with the boys' bathroom where the pipe cracked and sewage was leaking into the ceiling, and we had to close the bathroom for the rest of the day and fix that overnight. So there are things like that that are continuously happening because of just the ancient condition of our buildings. The $10 million that Amy mentioned was to really fund that capital maintenance plan for the buildings that we're going to keep and maintain over a long period of time.
Well, you know, having a pipe break is, you know, you call a plumber. This is something that, again, the impression it sets when visiting people come to our schools, the other teams unload there when they come for football and, and other sports activities. I'm all, I'm aware that there's other things that need it, but, I mean, what an absolute eyesore to the point where I almost couldn't believe it. And I've gone along with supporting levies, you know, everything, trying to be a good team player. I hope, Jim, you guys can, you know, throw $200,000 my way, that we move it so this can be fixed. I mean, it benefits a lot of people, and it's just a really, I mean, look at that hole there. I mean, that is not, you know, an eighth of an inch, that thing is probably an inch and a half deep. And that's where kids walk, and when somebody falls, you know, we're going to have problems. I know all the schools need things, but, you know, let's face it, Colrain, when people think of the Northwest Local School District, they think of Colrain High School. And again, the front door thing, I am very big, as you know, with the painting and the different things that I've done, aesthetics. You know, would you feel proud walking into a place that, that looked so, so bad? It looks like something that has been neglected, probably hasn't been replaced since I was there 50 years ago. So I'm just asking that we incorporate this into the capital improvements when we do, you know, as soon as possible, before somebody gets hurt, and also to reflect a positive image on our district.
What are some other options to that, Chris? Like, there's, some of it can be repaired versus, was that 175?
That was replacing, that was replacing what's there now.
Well, some of the issues, like, I was glad to see in one of your pictures, the railing was fixed. Yeah, I saw exactly what you're talking about, Chris, a few weeks, a few months ago.
But there's other things that could be done, it could be done in asphalt, which will be a little bit cheaper, obviously wouldn't last as long. You could size down the project. I don't know how many kids that we have that, that actually hang out in that area during any given day. But we could always, you know, size it down and, and make it smaller to get kids to the parking lot. So there's, there's several things we could do.
Can you bring something to us?
Sure.
Yeah, like, just kind of, isn't there some, like, epoxy aggregate that they can put, that seals all that up and then smoothes it over? It actually puts a nice texture on it?
You, you could, but it's, it's a patch, you'll be chasing patches.
I've used that epoxy, it does work pretty well. Did my driveway in my old house and my parents', and it holds up, the military uses it, you know.
Yeah, but you don't have 1,000 kids a day and, oh, tromp them through, tromp them through there though.
Tell you what, when you have cars pulling over, Jim, every day, three, four cars pulling over it, it held up amazingly well. And I just looked at my parents' old house they sold 10 years ago, and it's still reasonably good. But I agree with you, Chris, it'd be chasing patchwork. I'd be okay if you wanted to cut the cost down, I don't know, I'm not a cement guy, I wish Dan was here, he, he is a cement guy, Dan Unger. But, you know, if there's some way to, you know, maybe just take out those blocks that are really bad and reduce the cost. But, but, you know, we can bring it up at another time, but I, I think the board needs to be aware that this is.
I appreciate you bringing the pictures, I mean, I, I see it all the time, and I, but I also think there's a lot of other concerns that people could argue would possibly be more important, but, but I agree that it does.
So would the board be agreeable to Chris and I working on a couple of options? We can share those, and, and then down the road, if we need to, we would do a fund transfer once we get a plan, and we.
That's totally fine, it's our deal.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Thanks, Amy, you're always on the spot with these pictures.
You're welcome.
Leaving that, the 10 million transfer as is, and the five-year forecast passes 5 to 0. Thank you, Amy.
Thank you. Next, we have a resolution to approve granting the extension of the make-hole TIF for Green Township. This was an original 30-year TIF in 1994, they extended it 15 more years, and now they'd like to extend it an additional 30 years, so to make it in total a 75-year TIF, but it has been a make-hole TIF for the district. So I'd like to ask the board to approve the make-hole TIF for Green Township.
Moved, second.
Motion to second, any questions?
Is there an end to the extensions that they can ask for on this? Because they just asked for the 15-year extension.
It can go on forever.
Just a couple of years ago, right?
Yeah, it just can't be more than 30 years at a time.
Passes 5 to 0.
I'd also like to ask the board to approve the resolution of district financial parameters and community partnership, and this is to extend our community partnership of not increasing operational growth more than 3% out till 2028.
So moved, seconds.
Motion to second, any questions on that? That's your good news.
Yeah.
Passes 5 to 0.
And finally, I'd like to ask the board to transfer $10 million of our cash reserves to fund our capital maintenance plan for four schools, or three new elementaries, and now include Monfort Heights Elementary into that, for its deferred maintenance and to continue maintaining it going forward into the future.
So moved.
Second.
Any further questions? All right, passes 5 to 0.
Thank you.
Thanks, Amy.
Next, we have an item that's just for information, it'll come back in December for approval. This is our annual high school program of study, it outlines all of the courses that are offered throughout the high school program at the district, and it allows, once it's approved, our counselors to begin working with students in January on electing the courses for the next year, and then kind of dominoes into the scheduling and the staffing for the high schools. So, this is just for information, there is an overview that shows changes to it from last year to this year. And so if you have any questions, just let me know, otherwise it will be on the agenda for approval next month.
Thank you.
Right, so a lot of the update kind of got worked into the meeting tonight, because I was going to talk, since we were doing the capital maintenance plan, to talk about some of the things that we've had happen over the course of the last month, which we talked about with the water main breaks and sewage. And so we do have continuous needs throughout the district that the money that we have in our, our maintenance budget that we have in our annual budget is typically not enough, and we end up having to kind of cover that with other things down the road. So it's, if more is there, less is somewhere else, so it's that juggling act we do to make sure that we can keep the buildings running for the students and the staff, so it's a continual juggling act. We do have our next schoolhouse talk on November 30th at 6:00 PM. We rotate those from morning, afternoon to evening, this one is an evening at Clifford Y. And just to kind of bounce off of what Nicole said at the beginning of the meeting, we did have our incident of a false report of an active shooter at Corin High School earlier this month. And our staff, admin team, staff, everyone jumped in, followed their training, and executed that flawlessly. It was amazing with the way people jumped into action to keep kids safe. And especially our Corin Police Department, Officer Hustle, who's one of our SROs, is here tonight, and just want to take a moment to say thank you, just indefinite gratitude to the Corin Township Police Department for the partnership we have with them and the support they give us year-round. But in an incident like that, you truly see just the expertise and the value that we have and the professionals that respond, and it was an amazing response. And I know our staff, when we debrief with them, commented on how safe they felt knowing that they came in to help save the day. So I'm just kudos to our Corin Township Police Department for their ongoing support and response. And that's all I have.
Can I ask you a question about that? I mean, I know, I know we don't want to go into like a lot, a lot of detail, but I, people, some of the folks in the community think that, oh, it's a phone call and then it's, oh, we found out it was a false alarm right away and everything just is dismissed at that point. And I tried to explain to them the trauma involved, like, you have people that are barricaded in a room that, you know, even though you are communicating via the technologies, there's still times where people just don't know what's going on. You know, you have Officer Hustle and his team who are storming the buildings, doing their routine, rounding up dogs, I've heard that in one of the previous ones, like, getting all kind of different organizations and municipalities involved in that event. Can you go into a little bit about that as far as like the timing, how, how long it is, and really just how traumatizing it is to our staff and our students?
So when an event like that happens, we go into a full lockdown, and our staff go into the mode of barricading and protecting the students. And so there's an immediate response to get every, every person in the building in a secure locked environment, grabbing kids out of the hallway, if someone's in the bathroom, grabbing them, getting them in the nearest room, shutting the door, locking it, barricading it, and then trying to monitor our technology to make sure that you can keep track of what's going on. It's continuous updates, but that timing of that initial call to even, you know, when the police come, they clear the building, they go through with all of their equipment, looking for and making sure that it is a safe environment. You know, we're talking, you know, upwards of minutes before they're on the scene, but, well, moments before they're on the scene because they're there so quick, to upwards of, you know, anywhere almost 10 minutes or so before it's completely cleared. So that time when you are in that fight or flight mode is really a heightened sense of fear for not just our staff, but can be for kids. That's why the day after, we took the time to literally sit and have staff only report that day to go through in small groups, what was your experience, what did you learn? Because every time something like this happens, we want to learn and get better so that our responses are more seamless and that any hiccups get ironed out quickly and right away. And then also preparing our staff to be able to bring kids back and talk through with them about what their experience was so that they can be ready to learn that day they're back in the school. So it is, even though it feels like it could be a short time between the initial call coming in and being cleared, but then you also have, now you're, you've got parents who are coming to pick up their kids, there's an entire dismissal process. So it's an hours-long event from beginning to end, and then days after that with just processing it.
I imagine, people get in this profession not thinking that this is now in their playbook, that they have to perform, you know, just. And that's what, Officer Hustle, would you like to speak to anything about this?
I, I just thought, you know, as officers, we're trained to go in and do that, but to see what happened that day with the staff, the admin at Corin High School, I mean, they did it to a T. And without them, without a team effort, it wouldn't be what it is today.
Yeah.
It was great on all, all aspects.
And I will say that the partnership with. And I will say that the partnership with our police and fire and first responders, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I would say that we're a model for the state. Our partnership is so seamless, and they are so embedded into what we do and how we do it. That response is a unified approach, and we communicate and collaborate continuously to make sure that all of us are on the same page and that we're getting better every time. And we don't have the hiccups of communication and collaboration and not knowing who's who when you get on site. So I truly think that, you know, we have just a stellar force, but also a model partnership.
Yeah, what I see that is they have ownership in these buildings and these kids, that it is their true family. Like, that's the response that I see, which is to be commended, and I just want to give you a round of applause. Shut up, sorry.
Thank you. Board comments, Chris?
Just one comment, I would like to congratulate our top vote getter in the recent election for school board, Nancy. If you wanna stand up. Nancy Slattery is going to be joining us in January, and we'll be glad to have you, Nancy, and congratulations on a race well-run.
I just wanna thank Chris Trenton from Butler Tech, having the health, health tech kids here and the teacher. They do a fabulous job, and appreciate them coming, and wanna thank Nancy also, congratulations. Now, I don't know if you know what you're getting into, but here you go. And I just wanna thank everybody that voted for me, and I'll be back for another four years, and really appreciate it.
Matt?
I'd like to thank Mrs. Mitchell and the students Kylie and Vilaj, if I'm saying that correctly, for coming to speak tonight, it's always great to hear from the students. I'd like to reiterate what Nicole started at the beginning of the meeting with the moment of silence for the Tusky Valley. And so we as board members were there in, in Columbus, and we received the notification that the conference was shut down early because there was an incident with the, you know, charter bus from the band that was coming to perform for us at our session at 12:30 that day. And then just to learn, you know, as the details came out, that, you know, three students' lives were lost, and, you know, two parents and a teacher, as the shadows in that tragic incident. And it was just, you know, my prayers out to Tusky Valley, and, you know, really hit home with me as being a fan parent and being so grateful of all the road miles that, you know, just our marching band and our, our students, that, you know, all the athletic events that buses go to and from, marching band goes on trips to Disney World, New York City. And in an instant, you know, something like this can just really change your district. Prayers for Tusky Valley.
I always like when the students come, we get a little bit behind the scenes, look at what's going on, and I work in the healthcare field and to see these folks come out with STNA license out of high school, actually before high school, they're out of high school. You know, the, the industry needs that sorely. Just wanna wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. Thank you to our staff who have been going at it all the way up until we come up here into the holidays. Take some time off and enjoy your families, and stay safe. May the wishbone be broken in your favor.
This week, I had the opportunity to read in Ms. Spray's room at Pleasant Run, and just wanna comment on how great those students were. They're very respectful, and I love seeing every teacher have their own way of getting their kids to be quiet. Every teacher does it in a different way, and it's, it's just always neat to see how the students respond. Also volunteered in the middle school libraries for the book fairs, and just both White Oak and Coring Middle School students, very respectful. And the libraries clean, the students, you know, enjoyed coming in and purchasing books. A lot of posters sold still, surprised to see those are still hit all these years later, but. So I just, I enjoy doing that and just encourage people to get out and get into the schools and volunteer when they can. Thankful for the students that came and spoke this evening. I'm always amazed by how far ahead they are for where, just being in high school and, and what they're gonna do in the future. So just wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving.
Did you buy a Scott Baio poster?
I did not see that, I have a lot of Bengals posters from that book fair though.
They don't, they don't have any of those anymore. Not even a Taylor Swift.
She still has her original one.
So we do have an executive session tonight, so the board would move into executive session to conference with an attorney concerning disputes that are subject to pending or imminent court action. And the superintendent recommends that the board approve the motion to move into executive session as listed.
So moved.
Second.
You know, passes 5 to 0. I just wanna remind everyone that when we go to executive session, once we return, no further business will be discussed. Thank you.